Welcome to Duluth's Public Schools ISD 709 Regular Monthly School Board Meeting. We want to welcome our community to our public meeting. We are meeting at Denfeld High School tonight, and I'm saying that for the community that will watch this as well. Tonight, we'll also have the ability to celebrate the closing of HAWKs officially with paperwork, and I'll wait for that celebration. But we are meeting then in different places than we used to for our school board meetings. So tonight, we're at Denfeld High School's Media Center. And again, this is ISD 709, the Duluth Public Schools, and it is our regular Tuesday, once a month, board meeting, and we welcome you. And right now, Clerk Oswald will take role. Member Eater?
Here.
Member Kirby?
Here.
Member Lauter Kemp?
Here.
Chair Lofeld?
Here.
Member Oswald? Here I am. Member Sadowski?
Here.
Member Sandholm?
Present.
Superintendent Magus?
Here, virtually.
Assistant Superintendent Bonds?
Here.
Deputy Clerk Erickson?
She is en route. She, of course, has some car trouble.
Oh, good to know. Hope she travels safe. HR Director Severance?
Here.
Secretary Paquette?
Here.
Denfeld Student Rep. Saraya Crawford is excused. And East Rep. Ailey Nass?
Here.
Is Ailey in here?
Ailey, yeah.
Ailey Nass, thank you. And we have a forum chair. Thank you. And before we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, I just want to acknowledge that our Superintendent Magus is attending by our support and certainly appreciative of his desire to continue working and learning professionally. And so he is attending the, it's got some acronyms, it's National Association of Superintendent. Can you help me out?
Sure. It's the Urban Superintendent Academy, focused on equity, and we actually just were working with the head of the National School Board Association in our last session. So a lot of work focused on school boards and worked with the community. So it's been very important and helpful for me. Thanks for the board's support and in guiding me in this direction, too.
So we appreciate that he's here with us tonight, and we know that Assistant Superintendent Bonds and HR Director Severance and CFO Erickson will also be here to, you know, guide and answer and further the business of the board. So let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Located over here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Number four on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. And before we make a motion to approve, I would like to make a motion to withdraw off the consent agenda, item two, item one B two B, off of the consent agenda. It is a placeholder, and it is about the Central on the Hill Property Purchase Agreement, and it needs to be removed tonight as we work through some final things on the Central on the Hill Property Purchase Agreement. So do I have such a motion to remove one B two B from our consent agenda tonight? So move. Second? Second. Member Eater, motions. Member Lauter Kemp is second. All those in favor of removal of this off of our consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? And then we'll move, motion carries. And then we'll move to accept the agenda with the amendment. So do I have an approval of tonight's agenda? Member Sandholm, a second? Member Sadowski? And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Our motion carries for our agenda. Thank you. We have number five, our school and community recognition. And I usually turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Bonds, but I hear that Assistant, or Superintendent Magus would like to lead us in this recognition. So what do you have for us?
No, I just want to say thank you for this opportunity, and we want to recognize that this next week is going to be School Board Recognition Week. So we have, we're actually recognizing you as school board members of Duluth. The Minnesota School Boards Association has set February 21st through the 25th as Minnesota School Board Recognition Week to build awareness and understanding of the vital function of elected school board members and what they play in society. We here at Duluth Public Schools are joining other public school districts from across the state to celebrate School Board Recognition Week, to honor local school board members for the commitment to Duluth and its students. Strong schools help build strong communities. The Duluth School Board has devoted countless hours to making sure our schools are helping every child learn at higher levels. School board members make the difficult decisions each and every month and spend many hours studying education issues, regulations, and others such things to, in order to provide the kind of accountability our citizens expect. So this month, I would like to recognize all of you for the hard work that you've done this year and continued hard work before us. Even though we're making a special effort to show our appreciation for the school board members this month and this week, school board members' work is a year-round commitment, and that comes from all of us, myself as superintendent, Anthony Bonds as assistant superintendent, Kathy Erickson as CFO, and Teresa Severance as human resources director. And since we will be on break during school board recognition, we wanted to make sure that we paid attention to it now. So thank you, school board members.
Thank you. Thank you. Usually, I have a little preview, and I did wonder about that tonight. So thank you. Thank you very much. So that is our school recognition. And so number six is public comment. And so welcome, we do welcome all of you who have chosen to speak here with us tonight, and we will just ask you to, you know, come up to either side of the table and join us and share your thoughts and concerns and ideas. And I will call one up, and then I'll ask for the next one to kind of be on deck so that we have a nice flow tonight. And again, just welcome tonight to Denfeld High School and to the media center here. I know that as a housekeeping, our restrooms are just out this side door, down the hall, halfway to the left, and you'll find those there. And if there's anything else you need, just ask our executive secretary. Patty, raise your hand if you need anything while you're here, and we welcome you. So our first...
Do you want me to read this?
Oh, yep, I do. I do want, first, I want our, Rosie, you were always pretty ready to read our civility code that's in our folders. And so will you read that first, and then, member Oswald?
Thank you. "Community Vision and Priorities for Duluth Schools. We will build on our shared beliefs and values of unity, high achievement, and responsible use of resources to create Duluth Public Schools and classrooms that are safe, supportive, and inclusive. We will work to inspire every student to achieve their potential and prepare students to lead productive, fulfilling lives as citizens of Duluth and the wider world. Eleven Tools of Civility. Our school board recognizes eleven tools of civility that will provide increased opportunities for civil discourse in order to find positive resolutions to the issues that face our community. These tools include: One, pay attention; Two, listen; Three, be inclusive; Four, don't gossip; Five, show respect; Six, be agreeable; Seven, apologize; Eight, give constructive criticism; Nine, take responsibility; Ten, be honest and care for others; Eleven, show your evidence, share your reasoning."
Thank you. And then, member, Clerk Oswald will read the Denfeld, or the Denfeld, the Duluth specific guidelines that are on our website.
Public comment information. Information to know when you sign up to speak at board meetings. Persons wishing to address the school board must sign in prior to the meeting listing their name, address, and the matter on which you will speak. If you have any handouts for the board, please give them to the school board secretaries located at that round room, round table. Persons addressing the board will speak in the order in which they are signed up. Each person addressing, addressing the board will have three minutes total. When speaking, use of names or any information that identifies a specific individual is legally prohibited, and you will be asked to end your comments. Persons addressing the board may not merge their time in order to allow one person to speak for more than three minutes. The clerk of the board, me, will start the stoplight timer right there. At the start of each person's time, a green light means go, yellow light means start wrapping up, a red light means stop. When the red light comes on, the chair will gavel to signal you to stop. Persons addressing the board shall confirm their comments to matters pertaining to the agenda or relevant to matters of administrative concern, and in the interest of respect for each public comment speaker, please hold any commentary during the speaker's time until they are finished."
Thank you. So our first speaker is Lisa Anderson with Beth McCuskey on deck.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can I lower it a little so it doesn't fog up? Okay, thank you very much. I am Lisa Anderson. I am a special educational professional in the Head Start program, who along with my colleagues have been denied approval for the exemption request that we filed with the district. I have come before you today in hopes of clarification to the decisions made by the district and their attorneys regarding the federal COVID-19 vaccine mandate requirements for the Head Start program. I have contacted the United States Federal Office in Washington for the Head Start program and was directed to answers in the document I have in hand here. After reading the Head Start Performance Standards Statutes 1305.2 and 1302.94, it refers to anyone who works with enrolled Head Start children in any capacity regardless of funding source to be included in the requirement. I personally worked directly every day with a child that I would meet and then drop off at the footsteps of a school bus, and then he would sit with an aide for the duration of his trip. In a meeting I had on Wednesday, February 9th with human resources, I asked if the bus drivers and bus aides were exempt from the federal mandate, and I was told yes. There are numerous Head Start children that ride the buses. Are there provisions that the district has put in place with the transportation staff that supersedes the federal requirement that I am unaware of? The document I have in hand for Head Start Program Performance Standards clearly states that all outside service providers and transportation staff are included in the requirement. Without the opportunity of having a weekly COVID test now for myself and my colleagues, the disruption to the children and their families and staff has brought upon an undue hardship with the bond and relationships we have created. In ending, a clarification on this decision would be greatly appreciated as to why the federal mandate for the program is not inclusive, but as it looks to be more political. Thank you very much. And I can leave this.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Beth McCuskey with Ellen Netlin on deck.
Hi, my name is Beth McCuskey. I've been here before, and I'm still speaking on behalf of the local labor community, but I wanted to say that part of what I'm hearing is good news, that things are moving forward, and so that's a good thing. So I'm hopeful that the district is listening to the actual workers, but I'm also here because this district is more than just teachers. There are paraprofessionals, clerical, engineer, janitorial staff, along with our kitchen help, that are also working to have a fair and reasonable contract. And as my labor position dictates to me from my delegates, which we had a central body meeting last Thursday, they want more answers because they want to know how we, as a collective group in the labor community, can then come and be supportive of not only the whole community of our school. So I'm here to say that just because the word is, is that things are moving in a positive direction with the teachers, which is good, we are not going to just not show up for the rest of our collective group with our community. And I wanted to reiterate that, and just so that you know it's not a one and done, because we're in this together. And I am a little, as you know, I negotiated contracts 20 years with this district, and I just don't understand how a school board association that's not vested in this community, that does not, they dictate things. Obviously, you go through training and stuff like that, but we're a community that is vested in our public schools, not a school board association that dictates how you should negotiate. My point of view, obviously. Okay? So let's keep moving forward, but let's make sure that we're working on all of our contracts because we're in this together, and no, no school is good without the pares, the engineers, the clerical, cook staff, and anybody, unfortunately, I forgot. So, thank you.
We know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Ellen Netlin. I'm with the Northeast Area Labor Council, and our 40,000 members want to thank you for making a positive move since our last meeting and progressing with negotiations. As Beth said, we have quite a few other contracts that we expect to have positive movement on tomorrow and the next couple of days. I guess you have things going on soon. I'm wearing my little bit of red, but mostly green. As you know, I'm an ASME member. I've been a 45-year member of ASME 66. Our paraprofessionals meet tomorrow, right, Judith? I think that's correct. And food services are meeting soon, and we need to get those contracts settled as well. Frankly, I am not really sure why it's been such a difficult year. I mean, it's been difficult from what I've heard from our bargaining units, disrespectful, you know, demoralizing are the words that I've heard. And I'm not sure why we got to this point, but I can tell you, whenever you have an outside law firm, the way I understand, in my negotiations over many years, outside law firms have no interest in a settlement. They're interested in making money. That's their job. So unless you put an incentive in an outside law firm's contract to get a settlement done, they're going to drag it out as long as they can. That's what their partners want them to do. So consider that in the future. I've negotiated both sides of the table, spent about 20 years negotiating for employees, and I've spent about 10 years as a manager. Negotiating is not really brain surgery, you know? It's not complicated. Your public dollars are open to everybody's visual. Our union dollars are open to all of our members. They know what the deal is. Come to our contract in a respectful manner. That's why we get business done. That's the way it should be done. And I hope that that's where we'll progress to do that and learn lessons from this year because it has been a difficult year. So I'd like to introduce our new AFL-CIO president, Bernie Burnham, to follow me up here.
After Bernie is Maxine.
All right, well, good evening, Superintendent Magus, Assistant Superintendent Bonds, and members of the board. As Al said, I am currently serving as the president of the Minnesota AFL-CIO, which is a strong united voice for Minnesota's working people, of which we all are. For those of you that don't know, I got my start in this district a lot of years ago when my daughter started kindergarten in 1991. As time progressed, I got to work in our schools, I got to be a part of the Duluth Federation of Teachers, and eventually got elected to be the president. So I'm proudly wearing my shirt tonight. I'm a dues-paying member of the DFT and happy to do so. I think, you know, I heard the remarks that strong schools build strong communities. So true. I think the thing that I see is lacking now and that I started to see fall apart as I was leaving is the labor management process, which we had in place for many years, and we are very proud of and upheld it. And actually, we revered her on the state to do so. So I wish that that could come back. Those of you that are here that were supported by the DFT and got elected to your spots because of that, you know about this. You've served on some of those committees with us, and we expect better. When we talk about recruitment and retention in these times, you know how hard it's been. You see people resigning. You see paraprofessionals leaving their jobs. You see our nurses walking out the door, and it's hard to keep people in place. This is not the time to play with contracts and to play with language. I'm glad that you made progress. I've heard from Ethan, and we stay in pretty close communication, and also from Judith and other members of the bargaining units in Duluth. So happy, School Board Recognition Week next week. You do deserve some recognition. It is a hard job. I don't envy you. We've seen all over the country that school boards are getting attacked for a variety of reasons. So we appreciate the work you do, but we know that you could do better by working with our force and by working the labor management process that was put in place in Duluth many years ago, of which I was a part of the start. And those things are expected. Beth talked about all the other bargaining units, as did Al. And Jill, the last time you and I spoke, which was quite a while ago, you asked me what you could do, and I said, I'll tell you what. I know the teachers usually do pretty good, although it's been tough this year. But our paraprofessionals and our clerical and everybody else that works in the schools, our engineers and all of those folks deserve to be taken care of and respected. They have been here every single day throughout the pandemic and then some, and have not always had the choice to stay home. So I think, you know, those are things you gotta be thinking about. These are people who work hard for our students and for our community, and they should be respected, and they should be taken care of. We should be proud of our Duluth Public Schools. From the time my daughter started kindergarten in 1991, I was a proud parent, eventually became a proud teacher in this district, and then was able to again serve. So I'd like you to listen to what everybody's saying tonight. I appreciate your time, and we can do better, folks. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Maxine, and on deck is Amanda Fletcher. This is Maxine Alander.
Hi.
Hi.
I spoke with Jill about this, and I emailed her, and thank you for the response, but I wanted to share it with the rest of you. So my name is Maxine Alander. I am a junior attending Denfeld High School. I just wanted to express my feelings about our recent school lockdown. Today, February 9th, we had a drill using the Alice Training. I was in my third hour class with Mr. Shaw for yearbook. When the drill was called, we barricaded the door using desks and shelves as we have been instructed. About two minutes later, I looked over at the door and realized that it was a pull door, not a push. During an actual school threat, intruders could easily access our room by breaking the window of the door and simply reaching in to open it. Glass doors are a very big problem at Denfeld. Most of our classrooms have glass doors. This is a very big safety concern for me and all my classmates. I understand that solid, all-wood doors are very expensive, but I do not understand why the cost is more important than the safety of our lives. I know replacing all glass doors immediately is not feasible. There must be a better plan to handle the situation and to keep everyone safe at the school. This change of fixing the way that our doors open and the glass doors may be expensive, but the safety of our students and staff is worth it, even if it means it needs to be changed over time. The sooner we start this process, the sooner we can be more safe inside of school. I wish I could feel more protected going to public school. I want to feel safer in these situations. I anxiously await your response.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amanda, is it Petrick?
Pcheck.
Pcheck, okay. And on deck is Jim Jubenville.
To the members of the school board, Superintendent Magus, Assistant Superintendent Bonds, I appreciate the ability to speak this evening. My name is Amanda Pcheck, a special education teacher with the district for 13 years, and currently serve as a resource teacher at Duluth East High School for students receiving one, two, three services for emotional and behavioral needs. I currently have an active caseload of 16 students, 13 of whom are receiving Setting Three services. This classroom has not been fully staffed for the needs of the class. State statute says that there should be 10 students to one para and one teacher. At this time, it is only myself trying to meet the needs of the students whose behaviors do not allow them to be with their mainstream peers. These students need assistance with cognitive processing, especially under stress, and have behavioral correction beyond what is considered normal classroom management. Lessons are about rules, boundaries, limitations, and accountability. An imperative part of my classroom is safety and security for those inside and outside of the class. By not fully staffing the Setting Three Resource Program Room, it leads to safety and security risks for everybody, and it prevents learning. On February 3rd, 2022, I was informed that East does not have time to assist my students beyond a 20-minute cognitive processing lesson when students decide to disrupt theirs or others' learning through negative behavioral choices. Because staff cannot be at two places at once, be continuously pulled from their normal duties, this is not having time or personnel to assist those students on my caseload in a manner of which the IEP states. What is best practices, what is research-supported, could be reflected by having at least one person selected to assist the classroom full-time or alter what the school day looks like for my students. These issues are not, are a direct correlation of not having enough paraprofessional support staff. It is imperative that more is done to hire for these positions. Many are working above and beyond trying to support students' learning, and it's not sustainable. We have additional ideas that have been shared through labor management. As the body makes decisions, I implore you to listen, accept, implement recommendations brought forth by your building administrators, staff, teachers. We're the voices of our students. We know and are advocating for what is needed for the well-being so that learning is possible. When educators are supported in what they need, learning improves. Educators and pares support the need, adequate compensation for work, workload limits for all licensed special education staffs, general education teachers, and alternative secondary scheduling options. Thank you for your time.
Next after Jim is Ethan Fisher.
Hello, my name is Jim Jubenville, and I'm a special education teacher at Merritt Creek Academy, one of the residential schools in our district. I'm also the co-facilitator of the labor management committees. My school is currently understaffed, as are many schools in the district. Just one or two teacher absences makes it extremely difficult, if not impossible, to cover all classrooms. There are also unfilled parapositions in our building which hinders the support of students. Speaking for a few moments of the labor management committee work that I do, Mr. Anthony Bonds, our assistant superintendent, myself are both in our first year as co-facilitators. I believe that we have a good working relationship and have communicated through phone calls, texts, and Google meets. We have worked together and, I believe, improved the process for the committees to function. We email all team members two weeks prior to the meeting for agenda items, and after the agenda is compiled, we share it with the committee a week prior to the meeting to allow people, especially Mr. Bonds, to look at the issues that require feedback from management. We have stressed the importance of addressing issues first at the site level before bringing it to labor management. We have attempted to foster a climate of openness, and we make it clear that we have nothing to hide. Overall, I believe that staff feel they are being heard through the labor management process. We continue to fine-tune the process as we move forward and also ask for feedback from the committee members to improve the product. In addition to the other two roles, I also served on the negotiation team for the DFT contract negotiation. I appreciate that the DFT now has a tentative agreement with the district. The district needs to now turn its attention to other bargaining units in the district that do not have a contract. They need a fair contract settled in a timely manner as well. I would hope we have learned something from recent negotiations with the DFT, that other bargaining units need the superintendent and school board representation at the table as well. In regards to COVID-19 and sick time for teachers, the current district policy of only crediting three of the eight hours in their workday is not equitable. Currently, if one of the district administrators gets COVID-19, they can work from home without taking any sick time. With teachers on the front lines working directly with students, this is a two-class system of haves and have-nots. The policy needs to be changed to be fair to all employees of Duluth Public Schools. In closing, I want to thank all ISD 709 employees for everything they've done in the last two years, including administration and school board members. There was no blueprint on how to best serve our students in the middle of a global pandemic. We have done our best adapting to the changes, rules, and guidelines offered at the local, state, and federal levels. Thank you for your time.
Ethan Fisher, and after Ethan... Ethan Fisher, and after Ethan on deck is Judith McKeever.
Good evening. My name is Ethan Fisher and I'm the president of the Duluth Federation of Teachers. I wanted to take an opportunity this evening to come before the board and share some thoughts on our negotiation process. First, I'd like to thank Superintendent Magus for joining negotiations on February 2nd. I can only hope that the requests that were sent from our many members had a hand in bringing them to the table. I can tell you with 100% certainty that it made a difference. I'm thankful for that. For those of you board members that have shown your support in the process of negotiations, I'm appreciative of you as well. We know all of us have the job of moving forward and working together to do what is best for students. It is hard to imagine, and I hate to even bring it up, but in less than a year, we will already be looking at negotiations again. But I want to tell you a story about a teacher I know. She's been in the district now for more than 25 years. She is considered by her peers as an excellent teacher. She's also an amazing human. This past fall, she got COVID. Realistically, she probably got COVID from one of the four students that tested positive two days before she did and were in her class leading up to that time. By policy at the time, she had to stay home from work for 10 days, using her own personal sick time in that process. Thankfully, she did not get very sick and figured at most she would have stayed home maybe one day. She felt well enough to go back to work in the classroom almost immediately. Interestingly enough, one of our district leaders had COVID at the same time as my friend did. I'm thankful that he too did not get very sick. While running a Labor Management Meeting virtually one day, he was home. I asked if he needed to take personal sick time for the duration of his illness. His answer was no. He was allowed to work from home. To this, I say good. That's the way it should have been. But you can see where I'm going with this. We have an inequitable policy that unfairly penalizes ISD 709 employees who work directly with kids. At the present time, if you can quantify that you worked for three hours, the district gives you back that time. I say that's not good enough. ISD 709 received over $30 million in ESAR funds that can and should be used for just this reason. I ask for the board to weigh in on this and make the policy fair so everyone that works in this district can have the time. Next, there are a number of folks in this room here tonight that work under different bargaining units than the one I represent. They're also in contract negotiations or are waiting negotiations to begin. I want you to know that the DFT supports all of these bargaining units and stands behind them for a fair settlement. Thank you.
After Judith is Cassie Leturno.
Good evening. I'm Judith McKeever. I'm the chairperson of the paraprofessional bargaining unit, and I've worked for the district for 42 years. I will tell you, I come to you tonight with an open heart. This is a group of dedicated staff, and at the same time, we're exhausted every day. And today, I really felt it. As a paraprofessional, my job requires a lot of time and energy. As you know, we are short-staffed. There are probably about 30 postings at this time. Denfeld and East, I know, and Lincoln Park and Ordean East are hit hard. We were frontline workers for Tier One Childcare. We were there day in and day out with our students and our parents who thanked us a lot. Tomorrow, we start contract negotiations. We've met once with the district and tomorrow we will start. I'm expecting a long day with my team. Our team, we looked at, you know, the money situation like Ethan said, and I think we deserve more than a 2% of whatever you're gonna offer. We are working hard. How do you pay employees who would like to come and work for the district at what they make an hour? When I started 42 years ago, people were chomping at the bit to be pares. Now, we don't have people in those positions. We have people resigning and need more training. I come to you with a few of the pares tonight asking for a fair contract, and we deserve what we need before we see more pares resign or retire. I'm not ready to go yet, and you're not gonna get rid of me, but I speak highly for our bargaining unit, for our staff, our teachers, our custodial, our bus drivers, our bus assistants. They do a phenomenal job. My food service people, we're in it together. If you're in the cafeteria like I am in everyday kindergarteners, I'm taking my job and we're helping the kids, and then I'm working and wiping tables down or whatever it may be. But please consider giving us a fair contract tomorrow. It's a big thing to me and it's a big thing to 260-some pares. Thank you.
Cassie Leturno, and then after Cassie is Kristin Ormanen.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Cassie Leturno. I'm a setting three teacher at East High School. I spoke with you last month, and I'm here again to speak with you about the same issue. I work with students with severe to profound cognitive disabilities and students that experience multiple severe disabilities. I speak to you tonight on the behalf of the special education paraprofessionals that work in our school district. Special education paraprofessionals are invaluable members of our workforce in ISD 709. They are paramount to the progress and safety of our students. For the past two years, we have experienced a significant shortage of special education paraprofessionals at East and in my classroom. Some days, we are so short-staffed that we cannot safely move all of our students from our classroom to the cafeteria or any other location in the building. If there was an emergency or we had to evacuate on those days, we would have been unable to provide assistance to all of our students at the same time. Our students deserve more. During the week of January 10th this school year, one of our setting three classrooms was staffed with one special education teacher and one paraprofessional with five students that are non-verbal and on the severe to profound end of the autism spectrum. Compromising safety and student progress was a huge issue that week on top of just, it's not okay. Staff members from almost every department in the district have been coming to East and other schools to provide paraprofessional support, but I tell you that this is not sustainable. Give our currently-employed paraprofessionals a raise for the remainder of this school year. We received $30 million in ESAR funds. That is one way that we absolutely could show our paraprofessionals how invaluable they are. Many of the paraprofessionals that work at East and around the district work with our students and then go to a second job during the evening and on the weekends. One job should be enough for these individuals that are so invaluable. We should be doing everything we can to retain paraprofessionals that choose to work in 709. Raise the current starting wage of paraprofessionals. We have to somehow widen the applicant pool, and we can do that if we're offering more pay than other hourly jobs around the twin ports. We cannot continue to hope that more applicants will simply appear. Many of the paraprofessional jobs have been posted since August with little to no movement. And so I just come to you tonight to say that our special education teachers stand behind our paraprofessionals as they go through their contract negotiations. So thank you for your time.
Kristin Ormanen, and then on deck is Catherine Nakbar.
First, thank you all so much for your time and for your service for the district. My name is Kristin Ormanen, and I've been teaching English at East and loving my job since 1993. But recent years have been very difficult, and I do not feel heard or valued. And I'm here again tonight to bring up the issue of lost sick leave hours for staff under quarantine since the video of the last meeting did not go public. In October, I was exposed when my husband contracted COVID, and I stayed home 10 days to protect my students and colleagues from possible exposure, though I never contracted COVID myself and tested negative twice. I stayed home, but I worked. And I documented the many hours that I spent planning lessons, setting them up on canvas, troubleshooting glitches, correcting papers, conducting Google Meet parent-teacher conferences, answering myriad student emails, entering quarter grades, and emailing parents. Staying home meant taking sick days, and each sick day meant a hit to my sick leave for retirement. My sick leave is important to me. In December, an administrative decision meant three hours per sick day would stay in my sick leave. One problem with this solution, besides it feeling like a token gesture, is that I worked more than three hours each day. That's the nature of our job. My earned sick leave is still down by 50 hours. But there's a bigger problem. We have a double standard in place. It's hard to express how I felt when I learned that administrative staff is not taking sick days when they quarantine at work from home, while many teachers have lost earned sick leave in the same circumstance. This sends the message that teachers' time and work to keep students learning in their absence is not valued like administrators' time. It's not fair. It's not right, and it's certainly demoralizing. The district needs to fix this gross disparity. Thanks for the chance to speak tonight.
After Catherine is Jim Wilson.
Good evening. Thank you all for your time and commitment to public service. It is definitely appreciated. My name is Catherine Nakbar. I'm a proud public school teacher. I'm a member of Local 692 Federation of Teachers. I'm the secretary and was on the negotiations team this year. Many of my colleagues have shared that this continues to be one of the most difficult years. Recently, NEA reported that 55% of educators are thinking about leaving the field. We continue to need the support of you, our endorsed and elected officials. I have a couple of concerns that I just wanted to share with you, things that maybe we can help address. Throughout much of the past year, there have been many times and many meetings that I have felt like as a staff member that I am talked to and not with, and there is such a difference. I remain hopeful about the current trajectory of where negotiations are going, but I continue to be very concerned about all of staff morale. In the past years, through Labor Management, educators had a chance to provide feedback about the budget. It seems that this past practice may no longer be in place, so I'm reaching out for you to consider directing some additional resources to the mentorship program. In the past four years, the district has hired 414 new certified staff. With the support of an excellent lead teacher, we've offered this mentoring program to new hire teachers on a shoestring budget. There may be more that we can do here. Supporting and incentivizing this program can help create a culture of support within our system. To compensate people for this would be imperative. I did share at the last meeting that a recent conversation with an early-career educator, after taxes, they take home about $28,000. With a dependent, they're barely $8,000 above the federal poverty line. They struggle to make ends meet. I'm concerned that the wage of educators will be prohibitive to people entering the field. I've spent the last two decades working with pre-service teachers. Hearing their stories about accumulated debt, the money they must pay for student teaching experience shows the financial hardship just to become an educator. This year, the Consumer Price Index rose 6.8%, the largest since 1982. It is disconcerting how many educators and staff must work another job to make ends meet. This just adds to the high level of exhaustion. It's extremely important to examine the low wages in our system. Many of us in this room have witnessed the toll that not having enough paraprofessional support is taking on staff and student learning. We have dozens of positions that remain unfilled. Educators must fill these voids daily, and again, it's not sustainable. Finally, please consider adding additional reimbursement for educators that are working from home and planning lessons, the stories that you have heard previously. If allowed, when I had COVID, I would have returned to work on day three or four. I was fortunate to recover. I could only recover my taste and smell, that would be good. Bottom line, we can and must be better for each other. We have important conversations ahead of us and supporting a culture where we speak to each other with each other, offering mentoring to our newest educators, improving wages, and reimbursement for COVID sick days. Thank you.
Our final speaker is Jim Wilson.
Good evening, everybody. I'm gonna keep this pre-read because Ethan covered almost everything I wanted to say, but I just wanted to thank Superintendent Magus for his leadership during the last set of negotiations. I truly believe without his presence, we wouldn't have a tentative agreement. And thinking towards the future, I know that we're about a year away from doing this again. I hope we can continue where he left off, leading by example, being present at the meeting. And I hope that this board can learn from his example and know that we need invested people at that meeting and invested leadership at that meeting, which means the school board needs to be present at that meeting because you are our leaders and you need to lead by being there. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. It does make a difference, and we're appreciative of the public that comes and attends our meetings. It's important for our community to have access. That's why we're here at Denfeld on a bus line in a facility that's easy to get to, and so we appreciate that. Moving along on our agenda, it is the, we don't have any reading communication and petitions, and so we're on number eight, and it's the report of the superintendent, and under that are three things, A, B, and C. Good night. Thank you. Again, in just a minute, we'll move on to the report of the superintendent. It's the report from our student school board representatives first, then it's our superintendent's report, and then it's just a quick review of our schedule of meetings and events. So with that, I'll let Superintendent Magus kind of lead us off when you first then introduce our student reps. And again, I think you probably can see this from our board that student rep Soraya Crawford has a conflict for tonight, and our East representative Eileen is going to read her report.
Great, thank you. And I will share my screen. One second. And can everybody see it?
Yep, as soon as you hit the share, it'll get bigger.
Yep, sorry.
Are you gonna first go to the student reps?
Yep.
Okay.
So we have several different topics. Tonight, we were gonna talk about our, we have our student representatives' reports, and then our update on historical Central High School, as well as some updates on negotiations, some updates on safe learning plans, and a very brief update on strategic planning. So turning it over to our student representative. If you want to move forward with your report, that'd be great.
All right. So our school's performance for the One Act Theater competition got first place in their preliminary round and second place in sections in a very close loss to Cambridge, making them unable to go to state, but they were very close. Speech won their Grand Rapids meet and placed first in seven of 13 categories. They ranked seventh in the Denfeld meet and found it to be well-run and helpful at getting them into a competitive mindset. Their success continued into last week, and they've had a lot of support from parents. The team is very excited to have more new members than returners this year. And, I lost my spot, sorry. Knowledgeable did well at their first meet, but competing online has proven difficult with district technology and Wi-Fi being finicky and difficult to work with. Nordic and Alpine skiing teams both qualified for state. Nordic was competing today, and Alpine competes tomorrow and Thursday. East girls hockey ended last week. They had a great season. They went through many ups and downs with winning and losing, as well as a new team atmosphere with many new players. Through the season, though, they grew to be very close, and they're going to miss their graduating seniors very dearly. Our basketball team has won 10 games and lost 10 games, or 11 games. There have been a lot of injuries for them this season, and it started off with low injury in... lot of injuries for them this season, and it started off with low inju, in, sorry, my goodness, energy because of having many new players, but as the season continues, their chemistry is getting better and better and the positive energy higher and higher. Last year, JV and varsity couldn't practice together, which definitely impacted the team as a whole. Math team is first in their section this year. They had a competition yesterday, and the results aren't final, but it looks like they will also be going to state. So Association had Valentine's Day decorating party on Friday to help increase enthusiastic, enthusiasm in the cold winter months. Turnout was good, and there were a lot of fun designs and creative ideas for posters with the Valentine's Day theme. Though the cour, through the course of the week, last week, Association was selling singing Valentines to students for the class or classes of their choice. Everyone enjoyed watching them, and it was a really fun way to brighten people's days. They also encouraged everyone to wear Valentine's Day colors yesterday, and a lot of people participated. The hallways were speckled with red and pink. It was lovely. Sources of Strength is planning a spirit week for the month of April. They had their first spirit week as a collaboration with the exec board last year and are excited to keep the tradition going this year. Though this year, they'll be collaborating with Association as exec is planning to have Running Grade Week the second week of May. We're very excited in the hopes of having more full spirit week with activities potentially outside as the weather warms up in, in May. Exec is also trying to find more ways to benefit the school as we have plenty of time to plan for Running Grade before May. Some of the things that we're trying to implement include more publicity for clubs at East that might not be as well-known. We're starting a Club of the Week idea where each week we pick a different club to feature in announcements, as well as on social media posting, including information about the club. We're also trying to get people more access to printers in the school, especially for AEO students. It can be important to have access to printers, but not all students know what printers they can access and when, so we're working to find more ways to make it understood when and where printers can be used. Conferences and registration for next year's classes are the week after break. They start the week after break. So an issue that has brought, been brought to my attention is soap dispensers. Throughout East, they're often nonexistent or empty in most of the bathrooms, especially with COVID. Students want to be able to wash their hands thoroughly and use the bathroom and then have the ability to wash their hands afterwards. I can't speak for the boys bathrooms, but I've heard that they also lack soap. I'm not sure if this is an issue that you all would be equipped to help with, but I would love your input on how that can be resolved. I talked with you all last month about portion size issues with school lunches, and another aspect of that issue has been brought to my attention, that being the lack of access to water as a part of student meals. So many are hesitant to drink from water fountains right now with the current climate, and a lot of students don't have or don't choose to bring water bottles to school. This means that they barely drink any water during the day, and students who get lunch are offered milk. But I think it would be beneficial to offer watering cups or small bottles. That way, students can be more hydrated and in turn feel better and learn better. Vending machines do offer water bottle, bottled water, but not everyone brings money to school and, or has the money to buy bottled water. And that is the end of my report. Now I'll read Soraya's report.
Thank you. Soraya's.
Soraya. Oh, my gosh.
Soraya.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the school board. I'm Soraya Crawford, the student representative of Denfeld High School. I deeply apologize for my absence these past few meetings due to prior and great, oh, my goodness, engagements. I'm excited to be on the school board, so I hope no one takes my unavailability as being rude. Now that I am done groveling, I will begin my report. Highlights: A mental wellness club is in the works and is hopefully going to be able, be available by next week, assuming there will be a few delays. Junior Aspen Radcliffe was declared the Boys and Girls Club of the Northland Youth, sorry, I'm a little bit confused, was declared by the Boys and Girls Club, Northland Youth, Youth of the Year, I think is what she meant. Okay. Plans: I have decided to gather a diverse group of students from my school monthly to talk about various topics, such as what they like seeing at our school and what the school can improve on, as well as what the school board can do to improve or help our students succeed. Mr. Tuscan and I are planning on bringing back student council to Denfeld. Activities: It's almost break week, which I believe is a collaborative effort between the exec board and BSA to celebrate Black History Month with a photo booth, Black Excellence Dress Up Day to honor the Pan-African flag. This is the time something, this is the first time something like this has been brought to Denfeld, and we are proud of the progress being made. Junior Margaret Duncan is going to state in swimming. She ran through the halls today, sixth hour, to be honored by the students as she was leaving for state. We will be honoring our athletic court the first two weeks of March with seniors being nominated the first week and royalty being crowned the second week. Arts: Saturday, February 5th, our speech hosted the annual Rotary Speech Tournament at Denfeld and had several students medal. There was a total of 28 schools and 400 speakers in attendance. The following students were in the top seven of their category. Senior Tessa Shower, Junior Maddie Watts, freshman Regan Kern, freshman Ariel Lautenschlager, I believe.
Good job. I don't do it that way.
Sophomore Marley Bugby, sophomore Izzy Loma, and sophomore Sierra Boyts. Staff: Our teachers began analyzing the grade data from the first semester in their PCLs, professional learning communities, two weeks ago, looking for a way to increase achievement. Staff identified challenges with attendance being one of the most impactful variables on student achievement. And then our administrative team began working in the hallways every day, all day, to support our students more directly and maximize their learning time.
Thank you. Thanks. Thanks, Eileen. You know, it's hard to read somebody else's writing, I know.
It is. It is a little tricky.
Because you, you write in your own style, and I skip words and craft it together. So thank you.
And just know, as we were sharing some of those concerns, I was also sharing those concerns directly with the principal and others. So if you can also, can you make sure, if you don't, please provide the principal with a copy of your letter?
For sure, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much for those reports. And just checking to make sure everybody can hear me.
Yes.
Yep. Okay, great. Onto the next portion. As you know, we clo, there was a closing on the historical Central High School property very recently, and we have a little tribute that we wanted to share, and hopefully it's going to work through my PowerPoint, but if it isn't, then we will have another presentation ability there, I believe. Just one second.
There's supposed to be volume.
If you have a volume, do you, Superintendent, check and see if the volume is, is on.
Is it on?
At least we can see the presentation.
That's cool.
And I think we all, we all certainly have enjoyed the time with the building. It's certainly an iconic structure for the Duluth community, and I believe that it's, it's a, been, been a very exciting part of our history, but I think that we also realize that we want to make sure that there are other caretaker, takers who are able to care for the building and also considering the maintenance that was needed. It was, it was necessary for us to move forward. So this has been a good move for the district, and CFO Erickson, I know you had prepared some other slides previously, but is there anything else that you would want to share?
No.
All right. Just checking. And now I will try to stop the slide. I apologize. So we did hear today a little bit about some negotiations progress that has been, been made, some pretty significant progress as with our teachers' contract. We do have a tentative agreement, which is a positive move moving forward, and we continue to engage deeply with our other bargaining units and want to make sure that those collaborative processes are very much upheld. You also heard some things about the work we're doing with our labor management process, and I met with Ethan and Jim Jubenville, as well as Anthony Bonds, Ethan Fisher, that is, and we further discussed first thing this week, first thing this morning, or first thing on Monday, our next steps and progress related to working on labor management in addition to some additional training that we'll be going through. We also have some safe learning updates related to our plan. As you know, we have our guiding principles that we've been focused on for quite some time. Our COVID, COVID rates, as you see, the projected rate, and I did include it this time, but our COVID rates are dropping very significantly. We are seeing some, some very positive news in that direction, as well as seeing fewer absences of both students and staff, which has been very, very essential to us being able to provide services for our students. I know with the, with the mayor's announcement related to the, the end of the mask mandate for the city of Duluth, a lot of people have been asking us about what is our, our current masking criteria. We are very seriously looking at our criteria, and we plan to follow the current procedures, at least through the week after break, because we wanted to make sure that we had a time after break to, to assess the situation, to make sure that the rates weren't climbing after people were spending more time with family and others. But we are very seriously looking at our, our mandating of masks, as are many, many other districts in, in the state. Doesn't mean that we're stopping mask wearing, but we are, we do need to make sure that our criteria for when, when we would discontinue the mandate of masks would be something to, to consider in the coming weeks, and we will share more information next month. As far as some practice changes, some positive practice changes, we are resuming our ability to offer music concerts, limited assemblies, and also consider possible future overnight field trips and dances starting on March 1st. We don't plan, there aren't necessarily many, many dances that are going to be considered, but it is exciting to be able to have dances and think about things like prom. As far as critical safety precautions, once again, the, the thing we can all do to make sure that we're staying safe is make sure that we're, we're continuing with boosters and vaccines, making sure that we have masking when, when possible, thinking about physical distancing, staying home with sick, testing, and all those additional safety layers. And then very briefly, we've been doing some work with teamwork, and we want to engage the board. I know that we had a retreat this, this past summer and really talked about the, the timeline for that planning, and we would like to start this strategic planning process with the community beginning next month. And we, in speaking with Chair Lowfield, we'd like to pool the board, or poll the board, rather, on what dates and times might be available for a retreat sometime in the coming weeks so that we can move forward in that direction. That concludes my board update. Any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
Can you just clarify for me a little bit? When you say engaging the community in strategic planning, can you tell me a little bit about what that looks like?
Sure. No, I think it, the, I'm getting like a weird feedback echo when I, when I talk, so I'm not sure if, if you're getting that there. I apologize if so, but I think it's important for us to engage the full community, the breadth of the community, making sure that we're including a variety, as many diverse voices as possible to make sure that we're hearing from the broad community on what daily experiences they're seeking. One thing that we've heard is really that, that it's about defining the daily experience that they're seeking, rather than asking how, necessarily how we get there, right? So if, if people are wanting to make sure that our classrooms are safe from bullying, for example, they might not be calling out what curriculum we would be using for restorative practices. That would be something that we would be working on through the operational plans that would go beyond the strategic planning process, but it, it would call for, for a deep and full engagement of the community.
Superintendent Magus, you might stop presenting, and that will help because you'll have to, one of those items will go away. There's two pictures of you, so you might have two systems going. There you go. So that feedback may be cleared up now.
And now we can't hear you.
The joys of technology. I apologize. No, the, I, I, I thought it was done, but as you know, I like to take lots and lots of time with my superintendent update, so I apologize for the, the delay there.
Thank you.
Sure. And I am participating in, in this collaborative event with a number of other superintendents and the, the individuals that are part of this urban superintendent academy that the board directed me in, in participating in. And so I, I do plan to resume with them, and the, the team will be continuing with the presentations tonight, but I will be following up with them afterwards if there are any questions as well. But feel free to reach out to me at any time with any questions or comments.
Thanks, Superintendent. Learn a lot at the conference and bring, bring back to lead us even better. So thank you.
I'll, I'll do my best. Thank you.
Next on our agenda then is the report of our standing committee. Our first report is the committee of the whole, and I'll turn to Assistant Superintendent Bonds for just a brief review of our February 3rd Committee of the Whole meeting that was held at Duluth East.
Thank you, and I will keep it brief as possible. So it was, once again, a really robust meeting, and so there were a lot of presentations. One of the presentations was given by Saturday's property and CFO Kathy Erickson. It was related to the results of the master planning document. I also provided a brief update regarding the SRO event that was coming up. We held that event last Monday, and it, the turnout was, it was a well-attended event, and we were really very appreciative of my need to stable for their presentation and report. So during the call meeting, that was just a reminder about that event that was coming up. Also, I wanted to thank the CTE department and Principal Sebo for their presentation. It was a CTE month, and they did a fine job of providing the board and community who did join us with an opportunity to see and hear from our teachers and leaders, presentations, and things were set up outside of the lobby area before you can enter into the board meeting. And so I just want to thank Principal Sebo again for the presentation related to all things CTE. I also wanted to say, give, give an appreciation to Mrs. Meisel. She did a presentation regarding the Be Smart Safe Firearms Storage Campaign and the potential community partnership that we are going to seek. So, so we will provide some additional information related to a potential partnership that we would like to engage in regarding the continued campaign regarding safe storage of firearms. Mr. Bart Smith, our technology manager, provided a technology report, and there was also a full-service community school grant recognition provided by the director of Duluth Community Schools Collaborative and myself and Kelsey Gansner, and it was a really exciting opportunity because Mars Wilkins received nearly $500,000 to expand their community school initiative, and so we were really proud of those efforts and receiving that grant. And so that concludes the report.
Any comments or questions for this review? We were all there not too many weeks ago, and it was a great presentation. Remember Leppler Kim?
Yeah, I, I think I said it last time at, at the meeting itself again, but I, I really appreciated the presentation, all of the presentations, but the presentation by Principal Sebo on the career tech programs, and I really urge the community that wants to see how we're promoting both partnerships in the community, but also but also a number of career-to-tech options for our students at both our high schools to review that presentation, that very thorough presentation that was done. And, you know, I'm really excited about our future, our continued work in that area.
Other members?
I just want to add to something that Member Laffler Kemp brought up, too, about, again, both of our high schools participated in the Career in Tech Ed. And I think we also need to look at utilizing and offering these opportunities through ALC, too, and bringing them into the fold where those opportunities are there for those students that gladly pursue those careers in mechanics and, I mean, I could go on and on here. The opportunities there, if I could rattle them off. But anyway, again, I think this is something that we need to look at and make sure that the Career in Tech Ed opportunities exist for our ALC students also.
Can you make a comment about that? I mean, I know it's off the top, but an ALC student cannot take a career tech class at East or Denka?
I'll be honest, I'm gonna have to explore that. I can imagine that they can't.
True ALC.
So you want us to offer those?
It is another high school. It is our third high school. I mean, it's something from an equity standpoint, too. And we need to make sure that those students have these opportunities as well. So it's something that we need to maybe have a further discussion.
And I'll be happy to look into that a lot further and have a follow-up with board.
It's again, creative partnerships.
Yeah, I would like to just thank Members Sandholm for bringing that up. I, too, would really like to look at that further and make sure that we're being equitable to the ALC as far as CTE.
Other comments, or as we? So I don't think there's anything on the consent agenda from that, from our Committee of the Whole meeting, because I think that the grants and the monies were. So moving on, so our next report is the, is it the policy or is it the HR Business Services? Okay, HR Business Services, Member?
David is gonna.
Member Kirby.
I will do that since I was there. Yes, it's now called the Business Services Committee.
Yes, I saw it.
And this, too, will be brief. You can always watch the riveting YouTube presentation for those that are so inclined.
I thought it was, it was only an hour and six minutes.
We're working on less than an hour. But a lot of the time was spent by Dan Matty, a lawyer, who is working with the district on the purchase agreement with Central on the Hill property. And he went over a lot of the timelines and things like that. And evidently, the amendment that we had been presented with at that time was taken off of the consent agenda today. So there's more to come on that later. Our department reports included the HR monthly report, and that, too, is available. I would like to mention that our leader for community education, Jay Wrestler, is retiring, and I think that everyone wanted to wish him well and thank him for his many services. Look at my notes here. Let's see. The enrollment report was given by our CFO. And our projected enrollment now is down to 8,500, or 8,005, which is less than we had projected. At this point in time, that has some obvious effect on our general fund in the future. And at this point in time, we are expecting the ESR funds to cover that shortfall for this year. It was made, was restated once again that people should know that although we get, what, $30 million in ESR funds, those are, that's not a pot of money that's given to the district that we can then spend. Those are available, but we have to spend them and then ask for reimbursement if they're spent correctly. So it's not that we have this $30 million in the bank that we can then draw from. It's not the way it works. But at this point in time, the budget will have to be revised a little bit because we are down in enrollment. Nutrition, we're having some trouble still with staff, and milk. There's a problem with supply chain for milk. So even though there is no water, milk can also be a problem. Facilities report is available. We have no confirmed COVID cases as a result of staff or student interaction, which is quite good. And the Hox closing was also mentioned at that time. Technology report was given earlier at the Committee of the Whole. Transportation, we've had no road closures lately, and there were some applications for bus drivers, or at least one. So that's a positive, positive thing. Consent agenda, the revised 2022-23 district calendar was made available and discussed. CFO Erickson and the Finance Department showed that we have spent, or being, I don't think, spent to be reimbursed $2 million from the $31 million of the money we received as a result of our legislative change and going towards the development of the Central on the Hill. There are no bids or reports or quotes. It should be noted that the district is participating in a five-year program worth $1,800,000 and some dollars to train staff with the goal of improving mental health services in the district. We are one of the few districts in the state that are doing this, and this is quite a big deal and a good. Let's see. I think that is about it. We accepted donations, which we always like to do, and thank people for donating. I think that's it.
Questions? So these are, I have a couple. One, it was really hard to hear, and I would just ask Director Severance to just clarify. I just couldn't hear you during the HR Business Service about the calendar changes and why. I know it had something to do with a contract or contract settlement, I don't know, negotiations, something. Something about the calendar revision, so. And CFO Erickson, you might as well come up, too, because I have a couple of questions for you.
And if you come up, you can really get picked up really better.
It was discovered when we were reviewing the calendar that the teachers were coming back on January 4th, but that's a holiday for every other contract. So there would be teachers, but no one else working. So we adjusted it so that it would be, instead of Thursday, Friday, ahead of the holiday, it would be Friday, and then it would be the Monday, January 4th would also be a day off. So just shifted it by one day.
January 6th.
With the second?
Yeah, on the 2022-23 calendar.
And so their first day of Christmas, or winter break, would be like December 23rd, instead of 22nd?
Yep, it's the Friday instead of the Thursday. And then they would come back on Tuesday instead of Monday.
Okay, well, that, yeah, that's true.
Okay, okay. Okay, well, I'm so glad that we discovered that, at least now, okay. So that's on our consent agenda tonight to just modify that. Thank you. I just couldn't do that. I couldn't hear you on our ticket. And just, can you tell me a little bit more about Project Aware, the Project Aware grant? Is this, that's the 1.86 million?
Yeah.
And it's really through the teaching, learning, and vision, and it should be exciting.
It was a five-year award program. We are the second round. There were four districts in Minnesota that received the first round. It was a competitive application. We entered into the joint powers agreement. That was part of what's on the consent agenda tonight, our resolution for us to move forward because of the large amount of money. The other piece of that, which we shared at Business Services, was that the state of Minnesota does still require mandated testing and vaccination. So they wanted to make sure that any recipient of these funds, because this is actually a federal program awarded through the state, so this is what they call a flow-through, that we were in alignment with the requirements they were required to have in order to receive those funds. So then they have to flow through those requirements as well. Callie DeBrent from the district is the main contact of this, so she is responsible for the budget. And she has been working with our finance team to load that into our system. This is the similar, where she'll be, we have to provide receipts and justification, and then we'll get reimbursed for those eligible expenditures. And she's been working with the TLE team to create that five-year plan. And that will all be a part of future updates that she'll be providing through our system. So it's a great opportunity for us, but also a lot of obligation. So we just wanted to make sure that folks knew.
And it's in the area of mental health, it helped to staff?
Well, it is to, it is to engage and empower our staff to be able to provide mental health supports to our students. So that's a lot of the restorative practices, training, and other trainings for PBIS and other things. So they'll be providing some opportunities for staff to get professional development to then be able to help our students. And then there is some direct support to students, too, throughout the five-year plan.
And when do you think this five-year plan starts?
Right now. They're already in it.
Oh, okay. And is this more of a seven through 12, or is this a K through 12 program?
This is a K-12 opportunity.
Okay. Wow. Yeah, those are the kinds of things, I know that the appropriate place is for it to be at the HR business. But it's kind of like, oh, I love that you're able to come to all of us. And like I said, I tried to listen a little bit, and yeah, thank you.
Yeah, the reason it came through HR Finance was the contract portion. But certainly, I know that Assistant Superintendent Bonds would be happy to have it at a Committee of the Whole once everything gets set up so that we could provide more information.
Absolutely.
But you're right, the whole idea, I mean, it's great to get that kind of money, but it also then puts us in, you know, we have to deliver, we have to have people that will carry this out and find how we can use it.
Right, and I do want to share that it was a collective. Callie did a great job. We also had to work with Human Resources because we had to get the testing and protocols set in place so that we could be in compliance with the process. Our finance team worked with Callie to make sure we had, I mean, it was, there was a lot of behind-the-scenes work to get us to that point, but Callie did an amazing job to get us together.
Well, I just wanted to say that that's really awesome because I know a lot of students that would be much more comfortable going to a teacher about that kind of thing than a counselor that they don't necessarily know. So I just had to say that that's really cool.
I have two things, CFO Erickson. One is, I'm gonna assume that in March, we'll probably be hearing about the budget process and going over our calendar of the steps, the conversations with staff and us that you'll be having. So is that right?
Yep, I can give you a real brief update right now. Our plan, yeah, our plan is that, as we have in our past years since I've been here at the district, we'll be meeting with our building leaders and lead department leaders mid-March. Our plan is between like the 12th and 19th, 20th area. We schedule those with a team that includes teams from Human Resources, teams from Special Services, and teams from Finance. This is our first check-in meeting of the year, which is affirming where we are currently this year and then beginning to make estimates for what next year might look like in terms of enrollment and other building or program impacts that we might need to talk through. So this is kind of the Phase 1 approach of that. In conjunction with that, we have our finance team coming together where we start doing the larger-scale revenue estimates, because that's kind of that base point of where we start looking forward into next year and deciding what funds do we have available to make sure that what we are seeing in terms of our budget and where we are at the moment versus what, how we can make do. After that, we will start pulling together that first revised, or first draft of a budget, which we provide at the April School Board Meeting. That's part of a policy that the school district has, that we provide kind of that initial, here's kind of that first landing area. In conjunction with that, Human Resources will be starting their process of identifying what we know already could be open positions, but then also working with potential retirees, potential staffing changes, decisions on any other departmental or staffing changes so that there may be some movement from there. We then meet again with the building leaders with, now that we're getting closer to maybe understanding, can we maintain what we have? Do we make any adjustments? Are there any material changes? And then we start with a draft budget there. Last year, we committed to two committees of the whole in May, and then an additional committee of the whole with the board in June. Last year, because of ESR and because of some of the challenges we had, we actually asked you for a special school board meeting really close to the end of the month. Our goal this year would be to have the budget as part of our regular June School Board Meeting. But knowing that we don't really know all of the legislative impacts and other things, if other things would be coming through, we'd be certainly hopeful that if we needed to, that we could work with the board to maybe have that, because we're required by statute to have an adopted budget by June 30th. Did that help?
I think that gives people good guidelines. And then I have one other thing, if I may. Okay, I know we're gonna have further celebration, but I just wanted to take a minute, CFO Erickson, to thank you for all the work behind the scenes you did to help with the sale of Central. And, you know, I, one of just a few board members that were on the board when that started, and know all the work that has gone into getting us to where we were, are this week. And so I just did want to recognize your pulling together of community leaders to help us with this process and the committed work you did to the state capital and with all of us to make sure we were well informed all the way. So, thank you.
Thank you for saying that, and I just need you guys to know that Dave Spooner and I sat in my office on Wednesday afternoon after we knew that we'd gotten the agreement sent down, and we both cried. It was, it was tears of relief and appreciation. And as I shared with you as board members, we wouldn't be here without you. We wouldn't have been here without your willingness to have us explore this process. And there were many, many times, as Member Laffler Kemp knows, that we weren't sure where the journey was gonna take us. We really didn't know, and we believed in it. We had a great team of people. I know you know who they are, and they deserve many, many accolades and appreciation for the skill set that they brought to the table. It's amazing what you can do when you bring a whole group of amazing people together. And I am, I'm very thrilled for this district to be able to have that become a part of the next step of us being able to leverage dollars and put that into education and put that into our students. And thank you for seeing that vision, and thank you for your leadership.
Anybody else want, I mean, it, you know, really, tonight, was there supposed to be sound to the presentation that John gave?
I think so.
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Yes, I did see that it came, so maybe we can put it out on our RISD 709 Facebook, too, because, what, she took a good amount of time to craft that, so.
Yeah.
Or maybe if we can get it to work before the end of the board meeting or at the end, we could roll it again or something. I don't know. But he's, but.
Definitely.
I, you're really spot on when you say, I had no idea as a board member, really, what, telling, giving you permission to put, or as a board, giving permission to put Hox on the market.
Yeah.
Kind of, all of it, I kind of assumed that probably wasn't gonna sell. Who was gonna buy that thing? And we were gonna have to repair that roof that was leaking, that, you know, but.
You don't know.
But, you know, just really. Just really, what has transpired in just a few short years is really incredible under your guidance and knowledge and collaboration with people that you trust and did the job and got it done. And, yeah, and here we are now, kind of moving away from Hox. And there's still times I get in the car thinking I'm going to the school board meeting, or I'm gonna drop off something at the office, and I'm going towards Hox. It's just a good thing wasabi goes right up to the top and I can just go across, across there. But, you know, it's really kind of. But you know, it's really kind of eerie that we're out of the building. We're just really out. And I didn't ever go up in the tower, so sorry. Maybe in my condo when I'm retired, we'll be in that building.
And I still live a block and a half away and I watch it every day. I'm like, man, there used to be able to walk down the hill.
And just, yeah, and just all of the work that continues to be on all of your plates because we are out of there. Now granted, you're gonna reap the benefits of being out of that big space. But it's a lot of work to do all the different things we've had to do and still do. Okay, thank you. I have one, anybody else have, I just have a question about, so we are seeing a decline in enrollment, which is a struggle. And we really have to, as a board, kind of do some brainstorming too to give some energy to our community to, you know, come on and take advantage of CTE classes and what we offer in all of our areas. But so, and we adjusted, we adjusted by using ESSER monies.
We did. The current year budget is being supplemented with ESSER dollars to be able to maintain the staffing structure we had last year, which was really a picture of 2020. A year ago, we made that commitment. We made that commitment for this year. We have earmarked or encumbered dollars for fiscal year '23. But because we've had so many things happen, that's gonna be a part of our this year's budget discussion to decide if we want to keep moving forward with that. As you recall, one of the biggest pieces was the loss of about $1.3 million of compensatory revenue. That was one of the biggest losses that we saw. And so that was the first thing we wanted to kind of recapture. And then in addition to that, the loss of enrollment was that piece. And then in addition to the general cost that were going up just because of operating our businesses and through our contracts and others. So the combination of those three main things were what were causing that gap. And if we didn't have ESSER funds, we would have been doing what we had done in the past years. Pre-ESSER was coming forward and looking at reductions. So we're in a very fortunate place right now that those funds are there. But keeping in the back of our minds, keeping through our processes, going what happens once ESSER has left us and making sure that we begin that discussion now for strategic planning as we phase our way out of having those additional, what we call one-time dollars because they're not sustainable. So we knew that we had some funding to help support that, but we wanted to recognize that revenue adjustment because we again had hoped that we would see a little bit of a different re-enrollment number. But please know that we continue to see reenrollments. It's just that if they're doing it now, they're really only worth half of an ADM by the end of the school year. So even though they're one whole student human being, they only value at a half of an ADM. So in many of the presentations I share with administrators, building leaders and others, I try to joke, and we have a student here right now, that when they're walking down the hallway, we see little dollar signs because they are the driver of the majority of the revenue for the district. So the more students we see, the more dollars we receive. And you know, we continue to be hopeful that we'll continue to see those reenrollments. And you know, there's a lot of factors. It isn't just necessarily, there's always movement in the district from people just leaving the district. We may still be seeing some families choosing to homeschool or private school. We have some that just choose to find other districts. And due to a lot of different factors, families have the opportunity to choose different things. But as we find our way hopefully from the pandemic going into the future, we may see that traditional boundary area coming back into play. So we continue to be hopeful and we do see some movement that we're getting reenrollments.
So my other comment too with others is I worry about the $1.3 loss in comp ed dollars as it affects so much. Although I will also say ESSER money is flowing to our schools in need based on what we see. But listening to the state legislators, I know that there's a movement for federal to completely, to completely support free lunch and food throughout, like make it free for everybody from now on. That's what's on the legislative docket on the federal level too. So I don't need to get in that conversation, but as board members, we have to think about what would that look like for comp ed? Because really, I feel sometimes the federal government and the state government can give us ESSER monies and it sounds all great to have 30 million, but what they're not giving us is the comp ed dollars. So that can't be lost in our conversation with our needs and what our buildings need and where we have to put our money. Because I really feel like, well, yeah, they're allowing us to have ESSER and they're calling it ESSER, they're calling it, you know, COVID relief. But when we don't see the comp ed dollars coming because free and reduced lunch is, then I worry about that.
But they are, Kathy, they're looking at ways to recalculate to try to make up for some of that stuff.
As members are considering meeting or visiting with legislators, just so you know, for Duluth Public Schools, the best formula calculation would be to use pupil counts from the 1920 fiscal year, which would have been fall of 2018. So those numbers are the high peak for us, which would generate us, at least in the last three years, the highest reimbursement. We've been hearing that there are multiple bills now to try to recalculate or provide some grandfather provisions for compensatory. If they use last year's numbers, it's not helping us. So we, but for other districts, it does. So it isn't a one-size-fits-all. So we have asked for a recommendation of a multi-year greater of. So using maybe two fiscal years and for those districts who saw, reaped the benefit in one year, but those of us that reaped the benefit in the very first year, which is that retroactive 1920 school year, that would be the better, better. Oh, sorry.
No, I did the same thing.
The 2019, 2020. Sorry about that. Oh, sorry. Let's see, that could be some decent numbers for us. Sorry about that, I guess that's how we talk in our world. But we'll provide you with some background information and give you some historical context on our compensatory revenue. There's been a lot of discussion at the state level. There's a lot, every organization, including MSBA, MASA, MASBO, which is the Business Managers Association, have all got it on their platforms. And all of the proposals are slightly different than others. So I think it's always in our best interest to look at how it affects us directly. We obviously would like a change, but if we can talk to legislators and provide as much flexibility in what the proposal is, I think that's better for us.
And Kathy, wasn't there a pilot program through the FDA that they were like at the federal level, looking at how they, so we can move away from some of this paperwork filling out about how they calculate compensatory?
So compensatory is actually a state-funded item. This isn't a federal-funded item.
But it was the free and reduced, the way that they looked at calculating free and reduced.
Right, they are actually looking at not using that as the driver because of the potential USDA contribution of free meals. But then they need a new calculation and I think that's where they're struggling a little bit. That's why we're supporting the grandfather clause right now because it's data that we already have.
Yeah, I just, two things. Thank you for answering that question even more fully than you may maybe had planned to. But one of the things, you know, again, I just, an appreciation when we kind of reflect on, even with declining enrollment, that I've just been very proud to be saying that we did not make a decision as a district to, to, to lay off any staff throughout the last couple of years. And I, you know, that's a really key, supported by all board members and we wanna, you know, continue on that path. And so, you know, I just wanted to highlight that. And then the second thing, we were talking a little legislatively and I was gonna bring this up later. But I just want to remind board members that our School Board Association, every Friday from 9:00 to 9:30 has a half-hour webinar discussion, or not webinar, but a discussion with our lobbyists for the School Board Association. And it's just a whole ton of information in a very short amount of time that you can sign into by Zoom. And the last two sessions they've had are also recorded too. So it's been a great way for me to stay updated and then be able to plug in based on our legislative agenda that we as a district have. So remind folks about that. Thank you.
And I'll have to just chime in because of any lobbying that you can do, because you're spot on, Member Loffler Kemp, that you can do to help provide additional dollars to the school district, which is education overall, is critical. Because as you shared, we have these one-time funds and there's going to be a point where those dollars will not be there if we don't have additional dollars coming in or if they grandfather us in some other areas or if we don't find additional enrollment or find ways to just drastically increase our enrollments annually. You know, we're going to be in a place where we're gonna have to make some really tough decisions. And so any advocating for increased funding would be greatly appreciated for the school district.
Just as a quick reminder, I know Member Loffler Kemp knows this. This is technically not a budget year for the legislature. This is a bonding year. But because of that huge one-time surplus that they have, we're highly anticipating some action at the educational level. But again, it might be one-time use funds versus those sustainable things that we hope for, which is, we always root for anything on the basic formula because that affects every student, it's a benefit to every student in the district. We always advocate for that. But again, we may see some pilot programs. We may see some competitive grants or even regional grants that might come through with those one-time dollars. And as you all know, Jeff Anderson, who's our lead government relations person and lobbyist, emails us daily on what's happening and what bills are out there. And just as a reminder, we did have an introduction of the bill related to the sales tax exemption due to the construction project on Central on the Hill. That would allow us to retain dollars that would normally have to be applied for sales tax for the purchase of materials for the project, which would be great. We are on a multi-district bill, so there's several districts here in the northeastern Minnesota that are part of that. So we continue to advocate for that. That would just be money that we could roll back into the project rather than paying that as sales tax.
So that was rolled out, that had a hearing today?
It did not have a hearing, but it's been introduced. It had a agenda, so, yep.
Well, thank you. Thanks for the questions too that brought them up to the table to kind of share a little bit.
We had just said, I think we're gonna be good tonight. Thank you for letting us dialogue with you.
Yeah, you were good. Thank you. And so next on our agenda is the policy committee report. So Chair Loffler Kemp. Thank you. So we had our February Policy Committee on February 3rd. And again, I serve as chair, but also Member Sadowski and members at home are a part of that committee as well as the superintendent, assistant superintendent, and Patty Paquette. So we did not have any policies for the first reading, but we did have for our second reading, 526, the hazing prohibition policy. And attached to your packet you received was deletion of policy 5083, which is our, was our old hazing policy. So we have had a hazing policy and this is adopting the new 526. And this falls under the 500 series policies and there's a number of other policies in that series that have to do with students that we'll be continuing to bring forward as well. But I just wanted to highlight that, of course, the hazing policy that we will be voting on is a part of our handbook and it is also on our website. And I am just gonna read, it's a five-page policy. "The purpose of this policy is to maintain a safe learning environment for students and staff that is free from hazing. Hazing activities of any type are inconsistent with the educational goals of the school district and are prohibited at all times." The policy goes on to have a number of just general statements about the policy, definitions of hazing, the reporting procedures, and we, some of the changes that were made with this new policy we'll be voting on just make it more specific to our district. And then section five is the school district action. So what action steps our school district will take. And section six is retaliation or reprisal. And then section seven is dissemination of the policy. So again, this policy shall appear in each school student handbook and in each school building and staff handbooks. And then it goes on to talk about the legal references, cross-references. So it's, we just urge the public to, and families, to make sure they're familiar with all of our policies, but this policy 526. And I want to thank Jim Larva, who is the Director of Secondary Teaching, Learning and Equity. She spoke at our meeting and really shared with us the committee that she brought forward to review the policy. And she brought a, she did a thorough review before bringing the policy in front of our committee. So this will be, again, the second reading and it falls underneath the consent agenda. And then we don't have any other regulations. We also did talk about at our next policy meeting, which will be on March 3rd, we staff are gonna bring a calendar, a draft calendar with kind of month-by-month with different policies that we're gonna be reviewing. We're gonna move forward with kind of more groupings of policies. And so we'll be reviewing that this next month. We also have got an update from the School Board Association with another group of policies that have kind of minor changes. So we will be bringing some groups of policies to you and some with some minor changes. So we're looking forward to that. And just a reminder again, all of our policies are on our website. And for school board members on the NSBA website, there's a section just about policies as well, so for your background research. So that was what we reviewed at our March 3rd meeting. Board members, any other comments that you want to make?
I think that is great that you're moving through and having the staff come in and look at these policies and moving them through grouping. I think it's just really gonna help them and the policy committee plan all the yearly. So really good work on that, Member Loffler Kemp.
Well, thank you. I think we all wanted to move forward like that when this new policy committee started. But you know, also because reviewing these policies is very staff-intensive. You know, we've had a few changes there as well as with all the other things staff were involved with. You know, we moved the policies we needed to, but we are looking forward to moving more groups of policies as well and now that staff are freed up a little bit more.
Absolutely. And Member Kirby has assured us there will be no more variants that will keep us in this pandemic. Thank you, Member Kirby.
So thank you and thank you for that. No, I just, I listened to your policy committee too. And so I knew that, you know, there's, you know, you certainly had some, you know, input and I have great ways of talking, putting in restorative practices as part of your school district action because that's become quite a relative way of working through conflict. And I also know you talked a bit about developing the, how you discuss this policy with students and employees. And from my experience in the classroom is that in that first 14 days, principals direct teachers to different aspects of the handbook. And that's what we do sometimes during our win or other times in classes, like first hour, we're gonna do this section. And I would just try to share with principals, assistant superintendent, that this might be one of them. They don't, it's not the whole handbook that we are asked to share with our students. But, and there's a couple of places in the handbook where you have to bring it back with a parent's signature that says, you know, that they have shared that. And maybe, I don't know, this one would rise to that occasion, but just good work too. Thank you.
And I agree with you on those that come as well. I think not only hazing, but you know, we also have a focus on bullying. There's a couple of different policies that we're really gonna have to think as a school district, how do we make sure that those things are emphasized in either separate conversations with students throughout the year because they're that important.
I think the one on bullying and sexual
I think the one on, on bullying and sexual harassment, we, um, the, the students have to sign a, a form that all teachers have that I've covered it. So you sign it because I've covered it in my hour today. So your signature shows that you were here that day, got the information from the handbook. So so teachers are, are well-versed on trying to, to make sure the handbook is covered as, as, as much detail. I mean, it's not everything, but it's.
Chair Loffler, I really appreciate you bringing that up. I, I actually think, you know, as the handbook committee is meeting and, and that, again, um, bringing up that idea of maybe there are a few more of these policies that need to be signed by both parents and students and I know it made me as a parent sit down and review it even more with my, my children and so, um, when, when we had to sign it. So that's.
Thank you for bringing that up, Chair Loffler. Anything else? So next on our agenda is to accept the consent agenda. And remember, we have made um an adjustment to it. So um, thank you for the reports of our committee. Um, the reason why our consent agenda is at the bottom like this is because um, when we have questions or concerns about something that's on the consent agenda, we always would, would like to work on it during our committee meetings or by asking our district leaders so that once we get to the consent agenda, it can just be accepted as it is. So I, do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
And it's a motion by a member eater, seconded by a member Sand Home, that um all those in favor of accepting the consent agenda with all of its minutes and its donations and its policies, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. Next is 11, it's special resolutions and action items. I don't see anything. And then we have number 12 is questions or other. Does anybody have anything they would like? I know that um as we get going on the different committees that we serve on, whether it is early childhood or Parks and Rec or um our, our other committees, EAC committee, um, we would really appreciate some um opportunity to tell us and share with us in a brief, even, you know, maybe it's not always shared orally uh verbally here, but you know, if, if you write a, a paragraph, we could put it up on Board Book about the, the different meetings that we're attending so that other board members kind of know what's going on in those. Member Loffler.
Yep, I, I have an update.
Oh, okay.
Should I go ahead?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. So uh I, I serve as a liaison with the um Duluth Superior Community Foundation on the Duluth Public Schools uh Endowment um, uh funds. And this is the, the funds that we uh teachers or schools or a couple teachers or other staff can write a, a grant for and um, so March 1st is a deadline for that grant. Uh, and um the process is very simplified. Uh, we have, besides myself, we have retired teachers, uh principals, uh current teachers that serve on this board. And so we've been doing a lot of outreach to the schools the last two months to promote this opportunity for a grant. Uh, and we usually give out between 10 to 20 grants across the district every year. And um those of you who have been on the board know that we hear about those grants more in kind of May and June. Uh, so I just wanted to uh just promote again, uh this opportunity for our schools and, and all of our schools. Uh, it's open to uh staff, uh as well as, uh, and all of our staff, not just teachers. Uh, so um it's a, uh, uh, yeah, so that's my quick update on, on uh my, my service for the foundation.
Anybody else? And again, in some, in some agendas, and, and we heard this um in our training for uh chair and vice chair, is that number, number 12, instead of saying questions or other, it just says school board reports. And then it, it gives us an opportunity. So uh, you know, that's something we can, we can talk about it further. Um, Superintendent Magus alluded to a, a retreat needed in, in March. He said a couple of weeks, but we'll put out a number of dates, mid-March to end of March. We're looking at maybe a four hour, something like from 4:00 to 8:00 with a little pizza or something in between. Um, but the first, um, and it really is a lot about strategic planning, but it's also an opportunity and this is what we learned at the training from MSBA too, is that it's really pretty important for school boards every year to um revisit the 200 series, which is our policies 200, which concerns all of the school board um items. So my, my suggestion too is I, I know that that's going to happen, so you can start reading over the 200 policies and, and do that and um, and again, um, I really appreciate the work of the policy committee to go through those policies, but I also am learning from my years on the board that reading policies is really my job as well. Not just the 200 series, but I know Member Oswald knows a lot of the policies, but like 700 and 800 and 500 are all policies that I think at times we can trip up if we don't know it, or we don't ask the right question because we don't understand the policy. So that's kind of my, my report. Member Sadowski.
Yeah, um, I can give an update on the EAC committee, the Education Equity Alliance. Um, Member Oswald was there as well with me on the 9th last Wednesday. Um, you know, we spent a majority of the time, to my recollection, and Member Oswald can chime in here, but um, number one, we talked a lot about, you know, how can we get more students there? More youth um at the meetings and just kind of brainstormed ways that we could do that. Um, and then a big chunk of the meeting was um spent kind of brainstorming and identifying other community partners that weren't at the table. And um a spreadsheet was sent out and the people that were there can sign up to kind of contact those uh members of the community. And there was a huge whiteboard and I would say there was at least 50 organizations on there, a very neat web of, of our community. And I kind of came, came, came away from that meeting feeling really kind of hopeful and proud of um all the different organizations in our community that could be a part of that group. And then if Member Oswald has anything to add.
It was a very impressive community map.
Yeah, for sure.
And, and I look forward to working on it.
Yeah, me too.
Are they meeting at Lincoln?
Yeah.
Our next meeting is the, the second Wednesday of the month, I believe, that, from 5:00 to 8:00.
I have it on my calendar here. Next one. Let's see, March. Got my old-fashioned paper on. Um, yeah, so it'll be on the 10th, actually, but in March for some reason on Thursday. Yeah, that's what I have at 5:00 PM, I think.
So seeing no other, we're at um a motion to adjourn? Someone? Member Oswald makes the motion. Uh, Member Sadowski, seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. We are now adjourned.